Is now in session, today is Monday, November 3rd, 2025. If you could please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and wisdom as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion and help us to work together to nurture the bonds of our great community. We ask you to bless the city of North Ridgeville and all its residents. Let me pray these things in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Swink?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Abens?
Here.
Winkle?
Here.
Awig?
Yeah.
DeVries?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor? Law Director?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Clerk Counsel?
Here.
Tonight, under the approval of minutes, we have the regular city council meeting minutes dated October 20th, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved as originally submitted. Please note that council has also received the Finance Committee meeting minutes dated November 21st and 22nd, 2024. The Board of Zoning and Building Appeals meeting minutes dated October 23rd, 2025, and the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes dated October 27th, 2025. That'll bring us to our lobby session. This is the portion of our meeting in which the public is allowed an opportunity to address counsel. We do ask that anybody who wishes to speak this evening, please speak from the podium and from the podium only. I will ask you to begin by stating your name and your address for the record, at which time you will be allowed up to three minutes to speak regarding matters pertaining to the business of city council or the general affairs of the city of North Ridgeville. In the interest of time, the lobby session is not intended to be an interactive question and answer session, but nonetheless, we do welcome and appreciate your feedback. Depending on the nature of your comments, a council member may follow up with you. So at this time, the lobby session is now open. I do have some written submissions, which we will take in the order in which they were received. First is Robert Baumgartner. Mr. Baumgartner, again, if you could please state your name and address, and your three minutes will begin, sir.
All right, thank you. Uh, sorry, my name is Robert Baumgartner. I live at 6327 Stony Ridge Road. I want to start my lobby session tonight with a quote from Abraham Lincoln. It might sound familiar to some people. You can fool all the people some of the time, and some of the people all the time, but you cannot fool all the people all the time. At the last meeting, while I was speaking as a resident of the city, the mayor interrupted me and could be heard laughing into his microphone. That behavior towards a citizen addressing their government is unprofessional, disrespectful, and completely unacceptable of any elected official. I'm here again tonight because the patterns continue. The mayor pushed this council to pass a resolution to cover for what was left incomplete on the tax proposal on this November ballot. Let's be clear, it's not a mistake. The measure went to voters in an unfinished form. Instead of correcting it through proper transparent channels, the mayor pushed his missing language through the council after the fact on the promise that it will be as stated to the voters should the ballot measure pass. That's not leadership. It's a manipulation of the process. When a public official openly states that they do not need to be honest, they erode the very fabric of community trust in their government. Trust is earned through integrity, accountability, and respect for the people, not through arrogance, secrecy, or personal convenience. Councilwoman Swink was dismissed by Kevin and a majority of this council when she said or suggested that the city should look into the books. I'll go a step further. I'm demanding that the council immediately initiate an independent audit of the city's finances and that those findings be being fully transparent and available to the public. Residents have the right to know where their money is going and why the city is hemorrhaging funds. It has not gone unnoticed that city contracts have been awarded to Kevin's campaign donors. That may not be illegal, but it's unethical, tactless, and deeply damaging to public confidence. When taxpayer money appears to flow to political supporters, it undermines every decision this administration makes. Meanwhile, our first responders have been ignored and disrespected. These are the men and women who put their lives on the line for this community, yet their needs, their warnings, and their morale have been disregarded by the very leadership that should be supporting them. A city that fails to value its first responders has lost its priorities. And with the growing public frustration, a recall petition has been launched against the mayor. That petition didn't appear out of nowhere. It's the result of residents losing faith in his leadership and demanding accountability that they are not getting from City Hall. The people of this shitty city should not be forced to pay higher taxes to cover for mismanagement, overdevelopment, or political favoritism. We are not your enemy. We are the people you serve, and we deserve respect, honesty, and transparency. And I'm calling the council to stand with the residents, not behind the mayor. Don't silence those who are asking fair and necessary questions. And do not ignore the demand for open, independent audits. Transparency is not optional. Honesty is not negotiable, and respect for the public and our first responders should never be treated as a joke. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. The second written submission I have is Shelley Kersey. Mrs. Kersey, just as a reminder, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Shelley Kersey. I live at 37886 Stony Lake Drive in North Ridgeville. Twice, I received this piece of propaganda in my mail asking me to vote on a levy which has very vague wording at best. Council voted on a resolution which is in no way binding to offer 1% credit to those citizens, over 80% of us who work outside the city. Do I believe a resolution? In the words of Corcoran, I don't have to. Where in the ballot language is the wording guaranteeing the 1% credit for the income earned outside the city? It's right, it isn't there. Avon put their credit in the ballot language because they chose to be transparent. Many on this council don't believe in transparency or honesty, honesty in my opinion, and that's why the language is not included. Several other pieces of information on the issue are false. Hiring more police officers and firefighters slash paramedics. This city can't keep the seasoned veterans officers that we are losing due to the rule of three voted on by Jacobs, Awig, Abens, and Toth. Now we are losing another good officer in Brad Parker. He, like others before him, did not leave for money. It's the disrespect from Corcoran and Freeman, among other things, all noted in the independent review. We spent $14,700 to do what? Absolutely nothing. I guess you should have listened to that. Now you have initiated threats of layoffs and intimidation. Keep in mind, two of those on council currently are running to retain their seats. Jacobs and Awig voted yes to the rule of three, as did Mr. Abens. This garbage also states they purchased land for a new Westside Fire Station. City already owns land on the corner of Bars and Stony Ridge. I'm sure Corcoran has many friends in the building industry that could put up a pretty nice setup and get it done in 90 to 120 days or so. It'll look pretty, but will it last? Well, if it's any of the builders in this city, I highly doubt it. Personally, I'm tired of the untruce, those on council who vote for just whatever the puppet master says, and the fact that we have far too many emergency clauses in every meeting. Yes, Mr. Winkle, I do understand that there are some things that cannot wait, but there are far more that can and should. Why do we have those? Because the person who's supposed to do his homework doesn't. As leaders in this city, you should be aware of the items coming for a vote. You know winter comes every year, thus the need for salt. Look at the budget, know the need, and then give it the proper time for discussion and readings. It's time for a change. It's time for honesty, transparency, and good quality leadership, not just puppets. Tomorrow will be a wake-up call for some of you currently sitting in those seats. Mr. DeVries already got his. It's my hope that the other two get theirs. This city deserves better, needs better, and we will fight for better because that's what we deserve as citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Kersey. Uh, the third submission I have is Gregory Fanning. Mr. Fanning, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
All righty. Greg Fanning, 6025 Havencrest Court, North Ridgeville. Well, thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak here tonight. I just wanted to address a few things here. At the last city council meeting, we heard an excellent, well-delivered speech from an individual. He also spoke tonight, if you're curious who that is. His focus on accountability and integrity in government is exactly what every community should strive for, should be the gold standard. However, there was one part I just thought I'd mention. Uh, he mentioned Council President Jason Jacobs and Councilwoman Georgia Awig. Uh, I want to take this moment to say something about both of them. Uh, I believe they're good people who care deeply about the city. President Jacobs is my neighbor. He's always willing to listen and have a conversation. Uh, Councilwoman Awig listens, has earned genuine support from many. Jason and Georgia are both good family people who care deeply about this community, and like all of us, are not perfect. Now, do I agree with them on every issue? Of course not. Sometimes we strongly disagree, but President Reagan, I think, said it best, "A person who agrees with you 80% of the time is a friend and an ally, not a 20% traitor." Disagreement is healthy in a constitutional republic. It's how progress happens. Differences of opinions should never lead us to question anyone's character or commitment. I don't believe this individual's speech was intended to do that, just something I felt like I needed to say. But, so, good luck to all three of you tomorrow. We'll see how it all plays out, and we'll see how it all goes. In addition to that, I want to turn to the longstanding infrastructure concern of Sugar Ridge Road. As a member of Drainage and Flood Control Board, the issue remains a top priority. Uh, the two aging bridges along that stretch are in urgent need of attention. Public safety has to come first. The residents travel that route every single day. Sheriff Hall and his deputies have done their absolute best with the scales unit, uh, with limited resources and 18 townships to enforce. It becomes a tall order. At the end of the day, I think the correct solution is local action that's needed. Uh, I heard there's a resolution Councilman Abens is considering proposing. It increases fines for overweight trucks for $500 for the first offense and $1,000 for the second. Uh, I think it needs to be quickly introduced, passed, and made into North Ridgeville ordinance for the safety of all those who travel that road to prevent a catastrophic accident, uh, and as we await the replacement from the county engineer's office. Residents have waited long enough. The time is now. This needs to be done. One of the last things I want to talk about is last meeting, somebody came up and decided to talk about Councilman Eric Schaefer. Uh, during that meeting, somebody referenced a case involving tax evasion and welfare fraud. Uh, to be fair, there's actually another case. The individual's name is Eric S. Schaefer, not Councilman Eric T. Schaefer. Councilman Eric Schaefer is involved in a separate legal matter that is still being litigated. He's acknowledged the issue and taken responsibility. It's not appropriate for any of us to comment until judicial process is complete. The due process of innocent until proven guilty is very important. Councilman Schaefer has an extensive record of service, is an attorney, an engineer, an Army veteran, and I think unfortunately, some of the attacks against him appear to be politically motivated, to discredit his work of holding the executive branch accountable, which checks and balances is exactly what a legislative branch or city council is supposed to do of an administration. And I honestly think he's doing, asking the right question, and I think that's why some of people are now coming at him. Finally, I want to address something that really, really was annoying at the last meeting. No, no one, whether a council member or citizen, has the right to interrupt or speak out of turn. I've had the urge myselfs. I'd be lying if I said I didn't. I've held back because of the rules of decorum. Everyone deserves to be heard, but not only at the appropriate time, but in an orderly way. Robert's Rules of Order states, "Persons who are not members of this assembly do not have the right to speak in a debate unless permission is granted by the assembly." In plain terms, that means order must be maintained, everyone can participate fairly. If disruptions continue, the chair has the authority and the responsibility to restore order or remove those causing disturbance. Those rules exist not to silence anyone, but to ensure structure and professionalism as our city council conducts business. We can disagree vigorously and debate passionately, but as most always, do it with the proper rules of order. With that, I hope everybody gets out and votes tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, or, excuse me, Mr. Fanning. Is there anybody else in attendance this evening who would like to address counsel? Okay. Seeing none, the lobby session is closed. We will move on to our administrators' reports. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our Public Works Street Division finished paving the streets on the 2025 list. In total, they resurfaced 6.5 lane miles of roadway. They will continue to do patchwork on Sugar Ridge Road and other areas of concern as long as the weather allows and the asphalt plant remains open. And I'd like to thank our Public Works staff for an outstanding job of keeping our roads safe. Election Day is tomorrow, November 4th. Polls are open from 6:30 a.m. till 7:30 p.m. The Board of Elections made changes to polling locations in the city. If you're not certain where to vote, visit the Lorraine County Board of Elections website at votelorangcountiohio.gov to look up your polling location. As a reminder, issue eight, the income tax increase for North Ridgeville will appear on tomorrow's ballot. The city is asking voters to approve a 0.75% income tax increase. The city's current income tax is 1%. This proposal would bring the income tax rate to a total of 1.75%. The proposal would also raise the income tax credit for those working outside the city from 0.1% to a full 1%. The new revenue would primarily support public safety, but would also help maintain other essential city operations. You will also find a tax calculator on the website that you can plug in the numbers to see how this will affect you specifically. For more information, visit the city's website at nridgsville.org/incometaxlevy. And if you missed the town hall meeting last week, the presentation can also be found on the website. Veterans Day, City Hall will be closed on Tuesday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Uh, you are also invited to attend a veterans memorial service sponsored by the North Ridgeville Veterans Memorial on Veterans Day at 10:30 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial at South Central Park. Parking is available at the senior center and City Hall. And at this point, I believe that you should have received the PAFER that was sent out. That was a document that the finance department worked very hard on to put together to make things easier for the residents to understand when it comes to city government finances. So, hope that was informative to everyone, and I've received positive feedback on that already. So, thank you to those who have read it so far. Uh, lots of great information in there, and thank you to April and her staff for putting that together. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few project updates. Uh, the full-depth project and pavement striping projects are nearing completion. ODOT's led State Route 83 bridge over State Route 10 opened up last week. They will continue to have some sporadic lane closures as they perform their finishing work. Another ODOT-led project, the Center Ridge Road Bridge over Mills Creek, is also nearing completion as they move towards their final paving operations. The Frontier Park Pedestrian Bridge, a lot of bridges, uh, their contractor plans on setting the prefab structure tomorrow if the weather permits. Very exciting. And finally, today, we opened bids for the Peanut Roundabout for the landscaping and signage package and look forward to making that selection soon. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Director of Finance?
Thank you, Council President. Before council tonight is Ordinance 2025-150 and Ordinance Amending Annual Appropriations. This legislation includes additional budget for labor charges for vehicle and equipment repairs, payment of 20, the 2024 bond anticipation notes, a loan payment to the OWDA for the French Creek CM Tank Blower Project, and deposit refunds. In advance of this meeting, I provided city council with a memorandum detailing the items included in this amendment. I'd like to ask council to consider adopting this legislation tonight with the emergency clause to ensure the Department of Finance has the resources necessary to meet our financial obligations. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see here. As noted on the agenda, council has received the September 2025 Police Department report, and we thank the department heads for providing those reports, both verbal and in written form. Under New Business, I would like to take this opportunity to appoint Councilman Cliff Winkle to the Community Improvement Corporation. Uh, that's just an appointment by the president. There's no need for a second, but thank you. I appreciate that. I do want to thank you, Mr. Winkle, for your willingness to serve on that, in that capacity. And that'll bring us to recess.
Mr. President, move to dispense with recess.
Second.
The motion was made by Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with recess this evening. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, all opposed, say no. Recession has been dispensed. We will move on to first readings. Up first tonight, we have 2025-145.
An ordinance providing the renaming of Tebow Trail to Orchard Park Drive.
2025-145 will be referred to the Planning Commission for review. 2025-146?
An ordinance adopting the city of North Ridgeville cybersecurity program in accordance with the Ohio Revise Code, Section 9.64(c).
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a ground lease agreement with Tower 6 LLC for the installation of a wireless communication facility at Shady Drive Complex.
And 2025-147 will be referred to the Utilities Committee for review and discussion. 2025-148?
An ordinance extending the moratorium on the granting of permits on an accepting, an acceptance of the Planning Commission or New Business applications for smoke shops in the city of North Ridgeville for an additional period not to exceed 180 days from the expiration of Ordinance Number 2025-84 in order to allow Planning Commission and council to consider possible changes to use regulations in the North Ridgeville zoning code.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-148. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
We have a current moratorium on smoke shops right now, and we have been discussing changes to our zoning code, as you know. Uh, we have a plan to have that completed by the first quarter of 2026, and we'd like to extend this moratorium. As you know, the current one is coming up to expiration, so we're looking to have this continue so we can have that zoning code change happen and this be addressed within that change. So we're looking for the emergency clause on this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any additional discussion? Again, the motion was made by the mayor and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-148. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so we can have this take over before the other one expires.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2025-148 for the reasons just stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes. Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-148 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-148 has been adopted. 2025-149?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Ridgeville to enter into a contract for the purchase of a new ambulance from the state bid list or to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with outside vendors according to law and in a manner prescribed by law.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-149. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, as we've discussed, ambulances and bigger trucks, those kinds of pieces of equipment, uh, are taking now 18 months to two years for them to arrive, and we have to plan ahead of time now, much more so than we ever had to previously. So, we're looking to get ahead of the ordering of a new ambulance, and we have amended appropriations to allow, have the budget for this. So we're looking to have this passed and with the emergency this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any additional discussion? Again, it was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-149. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause so that way we can ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Second.
It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to add the emergency clause to 2025-149 for the reasons just stated by the mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by the mayor and seconded by Swink to adopt 2025-149 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-149 has been adopted. 2025-150?
An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 2024-139 of the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio, providing appropriations for the period commencing January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
Move to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Winkle and seconded by Awig to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-150. Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, um, we've got, we've received information before this meeting from the Director of Finance in what she referred to earlier, uh, to move, uh, muddy the appropriate funds to give the financial resources, pay our bills, and adjust labor rates for the repair garage. So, uh, with that being said, I'll be asking for the emergency when it gets to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winkle. Any additional comments or questions? It was moved by Winkle, seconded by Awig, to dispense with the second and third readings for 2025-150. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winkle?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for reasons stated earlier by myself and the Director of Finance referring to the information that was given to us prior to this meeting.
Second.
It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to add the emergency clause to 2025-150 for the reasons stated earlier in the meeting by both the Director of Finance and Mr. Winkle. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by Winkle and seconded by Awig to adopt 2025-150 with the emergency clause in place. Are there comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll. Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
Awig?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries, and 2025-150 has been adopted. We do not have any second readings on tonight's agenda. We will move on to third readings. Up first is Ordinance 2025-131.
An ordinance accepting up to 200 hours of sick time when an employee transfers from one public employer to the city of North Ridgeville, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to strike.
Second.
It was moved by the Mayor and seconded by Swink to strike Ordinance 2025-131 from tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
We've obtained some additional information that we'd like to consider and make some changes to this ordinance. It makes sense for us to pull this one off and introduce a separate new ordinance on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any additional comments or questions? Again, the motion was made by the Mayor and seconded by Swink to strike Ordinance 2025-131 from tonight's agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-131 has been stricken from the record.
2025-133?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to purchase two influence screening units from Ortech Incorporated according to law and in a manner prescribed by law.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to add the emergency clause to this.
Second.
It was moved by the Mayor and seconded by Abens to add the emergency clause to 2025-133. Is there any discussion regarding that?
Mr. President, these screens are something that we are trying to get installed as quickly as possible. We had some changes in the process over at French Creek. We had this go through three readings, but we're at the point now where in the process we need to get these screens. And in the subsequent ordinance that's to follow, we need to have an installer of those screens to help with the flow of the project that's already underway out there. And it is also 135, which is also a wastewater treatment plant ordinance. We're going to ask for the emergency clause for that one, too. They're all related to the project that's out there, as you know. You know, we go through some pretty massive projects out there when we're doing work, and to keep the timing of the schedule, we need to have these passed with the emergency clause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any additional comments or questions? It was moved by the Mayor, seconded by Abens, to add the emergency clause to 2025-133 for the reasons stated by the Mayor. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was then moved by Swink, seconded by Abens, to adopt 2025-133 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-133 has been adopted.
2025, excuse me, 2025-134?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and enter into a contract according to law and in a manner prescribed by law with the lowest and best bidder for the installation of two new influence screening systems at the French Creek wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt. Second. Mr. President, move to add the emergency clause for the reasons stated by the Mayor?
Second.
It was moved by Swink and seconded by Winkle to add the emergency clause to 2025-134 for the reasons stated by the Mayor earlier in the meeting. On the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by Swink and seconded by Abens to adopt 2025-134 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-134 has been adopted.
2025-135?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to contract for launder, covers, purchase, and installation according to law and in a manner prescribed by law, and to authorize the installation of an alternative bid three as part of the replacement and upgrade of the complete mixed tank aeration and mixing systems at the French Creek wastewater treatment plant.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to add the emergency clause.
Second.
It was moved by the Mayor and seconded by Abens to add the emergency clause to 2025-135. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, on this, the covers and the mixed tank, they go hand in hand, and they are part of the process that's involved, along with the screening system that makes the plant run, and we need to replace them all simultaneously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any additional comments, questions? Again, the motion was made by the Mayor and seconded by Abens to add the emergency clause to 2025-135. For the reasons just stated by the Mayor, on the emergency clause, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by Swink, seconded by Abens, to adopt 2025-135 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-135 has been adopted.
2025-136?
An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 5679-2019, which authorized the inclusion of non-written assessment for the positions of police chief and police captain.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt. Second.
It was moved by Swink and seconded by Abens to adopt 2025-136. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-136 has been adopted.
2025-137?
An ordinance amending Ordinance Number 5681-2019, which authorized the inclusion of non-written assessment for the positions of fire chief and assistant fire chief.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt. Second.
It was moved by Swink, seconded by Abens, to adopt 2025-137. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-137 has been adopted.
2025-139?
An ordinance providing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $4,025,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds and to provide funds to pay the cost of acquiring and installing ultrasonic water meter equipment, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Swink?
Move to adopt. Second.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Move to add the emergency clause.
Second.
It was moved by the Mayor and seconded by Abens to add the emergency clause to 2025-139. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I'll have the Finance Director explain that.
Director of Finance?
Yeah, in order for us to have a timely note sale, we need the emergency clause. That process will start this week to sell those notes so that we can get the financing and to pay the current notes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions or comments? So, again, the motion was made by the Mayor, seconded by Abens, to add the emergency clause to 2025-139 for the reasons stated by the Director of Finance. On the emergency clause alone, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. It was moved by Swink and seconded by Abens to adopt 2025-139 with the emergency clause in place. Are there any comments or questions at this time? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Swink?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Abens?
Yes.
Winkle?
Yes.
AWIG?
Yes.
DeVries?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion carries and 2025-139 has been adopted.
Ladies and gentlemen, Finance Committee meetings to discuss the 2026 budget are scheduled for Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. and Thursday, November 6th, 2025, again at 9:30 a.m. here in council chambers on both days.